I would like to welcome everybody to the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners meeting for December 18th, and with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We could just ask everyone to take a moment of silence.
Stand and follow me with the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Santa.
Thank you very much, same back to you. I've been invited here today to say some nice words about our board here. We're all here to support the board, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I'm supposed to say a bunch of nice words, and I brought parts of my nice and naughty list. And, oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, it must be, because there's an awful lot of red on this list. Oh, sorry, this is Orange Counties. Sorry.
That don't work.
All right, now, I would like to, first of all, thank all of you for doing your community service, for your districts and for the rest of us for the county. I'd like to start with Commissioner Pritchett. You've got a pretty interesting job. You've got your area, and then you're the lead this year. That makes you responsible for everything. I'm sorry, the chair.
No, he said you were this year, yeah. Okay, this year.
Yes. I don't have that wrong, I don't think. My notes say you're the one they're going to blame.
Sorry, I'm just learning how to speak Santa, so.
Not a problem. I understand that it's been a little bit of a tough start, but you've set an excellent example for everybody, which keeps you right up there on the top of the nice list. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Santa.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas.
And then next is Commissioner Lowberg. How are you today?
How are you, Mr. Claus?
I'm not bad.
Good, happy to hear it.
Me too. I'm glad I'm reading this list and not that one I showed you at first. Got to talk to them later. I understand you're the new person on the list.
Yes.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's always a good thing when you're serving the public. Unfortunately, that makes you public, so hopefully that's a good thing.
Remains to be seen, Mr. Claus.
Yes, it does, trust me, I know. That's why I control the naughty list, otherwise Mrs. Claus has offered to take it, and it's like, no, I don't want to go on it, so. So, for the time being, we're going to start you off as a new politician here on the nice list.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Very Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Very welcome.
I was hoping you'd stay on that list.
Well, everybody gets that option. All right, now, the next gentleman would be Commissioner Tobaya. And that's one of the red checkmarks. He's missing work, and he wasn't here to say hello to, so I have him down on the good list. He'll be there until he proves otherwise, so. All right, then we have Commissioner Smith. Sir, how you doing?
I'm doing great, Santa, thank you.
All right. I understand you do a bit of charitable work for the cancer patients.
I do.
And I appreciate that. I work with a lot of cancer patients and children, and in fact, I have a visit on Thursday over to Arnold Palmer Hospital for the children that won't be going home for Christmas. So, I understand you're collecting a bunch of gifts and stuff like that, so thank you very much for the Christmas spirit and your service.
Thank you, Santa, and thank you for all you do.
And Ms. Arden? Is an arty. I will get that right. I hear you've been collecting gifts for our much older children, for the seniors. Do you have any place in particular that you're collecting them for, or just?
We collect it for the elderly that are wards of the state. Our office does a collection every Christmas, and these are people who are wards of the state that don't have family.
All right, then I'll get some information from this young lady and see if I can't get you some more.
We appreciate that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that. And then we have the county attorney, attorney Bentley. Understand you just, sorry, down there. A well-deserved promotion this year. That means you worked for it, so you've been working for the people of the county, and they've recognized it. That's a good thing.
It's my pleasure.
And ours, too, thank you. I know sometimes the lawyers end up on the naughty list, but this is definitely a pleasure to say thank you.
You're very welcome. Merry Christmas.
Depends on what side of the aisle.
What's that?
Depends on what side of the aisle.
No, it depends on whether you win or lose. Your lawyer might be the best guy in the world until you lose. All right, and Bate? Sorry. County manager, and how are you today?
Fine, thank you.
All right. Right here, it says that, "I thought I had a big job, but you might just have me beat. I only have to worry about all the children in the world keeping them happy one day out of the year, but you have to satisfy these five, 365." That could be a challenge, but they're on the good list, so they can't be too bad. So, for keeping everybody in line, you're definitely on the good list. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
All right, can I hear it for the county commissioners, please? Let's not forget their staff and volunteers that helped them put all this together. So, thank you very much for having me in. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, Santa. We don't have any minutes for approval. We have a resolution. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I have Phil Scarpelli up? Phil, you can bring them down, too. Thank you for being here. Let me read this. Whereas, Brevard County has over 107,000 precious children whose safety and well-being is of the utmost importance to our citizens, and whereas in 1996, the Florida Legislature created statute 409.1617 requiring the privatization of child welfare with the intent of transitioning the management from a state-run to a locally-driven system of care through public-private partnerships that would take responsibility for the children and families that reside within the local community. And whereas, in 2004, Brevard County government community leaders and local citizens came together to develop priorities for the local system of care that greatly improved the quality of life of those served and reduced the number of children who suffered abuse, neglect, or abandonment, and helped to reduce the number of children entering the formal child welfare system. And whereas, Brevard Family Partnership was established in 2004 as a community-based care of Brevard County as the result of the investment and leadership of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners to form the lead child welfare agency in Brevard County. Whereas, Brevard Family Partnership, with the help of its partners, providers, and community supporters, has reduced the number of children in formal child welfare dependency system by more than 50%. And whereas, case managers, local providers, stakeholders, and community partners have gone above and beyond to serve the children and families of Brevard County, and the children who are temporarily removed from their homes, and over 1,000 children have become members of forever families through public adoption. Whereas, the vision of the community to implement an aggressive front-end prevention and diversion program, Brevard Care's Prevention and Family Preservation Program has served over 24,000 children. Whereas, it has been proven through evidence that community-based care, as designed by Together in Partnership, ratified by the Community Alliance, and managed by Brevard Family Partnership, works in Brevard County, and that such a model is in the best interests of Brevard County's children and families and should remain the chosen system of care in Brevard. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners acknowledges its continued support of Brevard Family Partnership as the lead child welfare agency in Brevard County and endorses the system of care model it employs. Done, ordered, and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, this 18th day of December 2018. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
You have the floor.
Well, thank you, and good morning to each and every one of you, and a very happy holiday season to you all. You know, my name is Phil Scarpelli. I'm the newly-appointed chief executive officer with Brevard Family Partnership and its family of agencies. I've been involved since the inception of that mandate, almost, you know, almost two decades ago, and I stand before you very, very proud and honored to be serving the children and families of this county. I'm also proud to be standing with the membership of our Board of Directors, to include our board chair, who, I assure you, are the most committed individuals I've ever worked with. They roll up their sleeves, they're very active and passionate about serving this community. In these changing times where families struggle, it's organizations like ours who really embrace the endorsement, the support of the commission and all the work that you do, and the fact that today you've accepted this opportunity to acknowledge this proclamation. But we need to stand together as a greater community. I'm also here present with some of the executives of our organization, who too have had longstanding history, not only in the field of child welfare, but with this organization, its stability and its future. Our promise and our commitment to not only you, our Board of County Commissioners, but to this community at large, is to do everything possible, not just for those who are most vulnerable, but to all children and families, to help support a structure and infrastructure and resource base that will help all families be strong, safe, and resilient. So, we really humbly thank you for this acknowledgement, thank you for your support, and thank you for this opportunity to stand before you today, and wishing you a very happy and pleasant 2019.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. Would any of the commissioners like anything pulled from consent?
I'd like to pull my board appointments.
Okay, that is item F-11. Any other items? Can I get a motion to approve consent with the removal of item F-11?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lowberg?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Lowberg?
Certainly. If you'd like, I can address it now, or I can address it down when we have the board reports. You tell me.
The items now?
Okay.
Might as well handle it now.
Yeah, let's go for it. There are a couple items here. I have copies for every one. Let's see, we have three, four on that side. And then, Ms. Bentley, you have one as well, right? Yeah, we should be okay.
I can pass them down.
If you would, I'm just going to keep one for myself. Thanks. Okay, so first up, on Myra, I had two individuals that were directors resign. I've got copies that I've just passed out of their resignation letters. One of them is the current chairman of Myra, and another is a director of Myra. And in the actual letters themselves, you'll notice, in addition to clearly resigning, the second paragraph on each reads more or less identically. I would ask, and I would appreciate and ask that Commissioner Lowberg consider reappointing me to fill the vacancy created by this resignation. So, I imagine it seems a little weird that we have two folks resigning, and then in the resignation letters, asking me to reappoint them. I just want to give you guys a little bit of brief background in terms of why that is. Prior to my being elected to the commission, there were two appointments made such that they would not take effect until after my term had started by the prior commissioner. And I would never appoint someone in my term as commissioner, barring some incredibly extenuating circumstances, for a term beginning after my term ends. And I thought that it would be a little bit more appropriate for me to appoint these folks for terms beginning in the time that I'm in office, so I asked them as a courtesy to me if they would mind resigning, with the understanding being that I'd turn right around and reappoint them, because I'm satisfied with the job that they've done, but I was just concerned that the precedent being set of having someone appointed to begin their term after I'm out isn't necessarily the most healthy thing for the commission. I don't have any intention of doing that with respect to any boards. Certainly, they were understanding, so I would like to reappoint them now that they've resigned. And with respect to that as well, I mentioned one of the two individuals is the current chairman, that's Eddie Lebron. I'd like, and I believe Ms. Bentley said, we just have to take notice of his being chairman. Is that correct?
Or you could affirm it.
Okay, let's go ahead, and I'll end up moving here, I guess, to accept the board appointments with the following changes. With respect to Eddie Lebron, we'll reappoint him now that he's resigned. Same thing with Andy Barber with Eddie Lebron. Let's go ahead and affirm that Eddie Lebron is chairman, and this has already been vetted by Myra, they're happy with this, this is what their internal vote had. And then Patty Stratton as well was selected by Myra to serve as their vice chairman, so I'd ask that we affirm that as well. I believe that addresses the Myra concerns. Also, there were some other appointments that I did want to address, one in particular that has to be addressed now. I'd like to appoint Michael Hartman onto the Board of Adjustment. I did not have a chance to get that done prior to the time this was submitted, but the remainder, I think, we can address when we have the board reports down the road. So, I'd move to accept that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'd move to accept the appointments with the changes noted with respect to Eddie Lebron, Andy Barber, and Patty Stratton.
And with the addition of Michael Hartman?
Yes, and with the addition of Michael Hartman to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, any further discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's, I mean, I'm satisfied with that.
All right, right on to public comments.
Charles Tovey, 2555, Roberts Road, Melbourne. I wish everybody happy holidays to those that don't believe, and to those that believe, happy birthday, Jesus. I had written some schematics the last time I spoke and turned them in, and one schematic was on the lagoon work that I do and the area that I concentrated most on, and the other one's schematic of my property of what I converted it to utilizing as an environmental spot to absorb and process the water, and I will redo those in a more orderly fashion to where it'll be legible and the, anyways, it'll be more legible. I do have a question on what I'm allowed to do on my property and with my house. I was told that I have to restore it back to the original state, and my intention at buying the property was to modify it for environmental specifications and mainly the solar panels and some other energy ideas I have. I would like to implement them on my property and use it as that, and since I've been damaged by a suspect, allegedly damaged by a suspect, they've, I've incurred damages, and I'd like to convert those into environmental uses. There's not much left of my property, so I'm not worried about what I want to do. I'm concerned about repairing it back to a state to where you'll be accepted, or it will be accepted by Brevard County and my community, but as well as to my specifications to what I bought the property for. And I'm rambling, I'm not usually at a loss for words, but this morning I am, and I also wanted to make a suggestion about a small table being put at the back where we fill out our public comment cards or speaker cards. That would alleviate some of the congestion built up and free up some time for other people to have access to those documents needed. One thing, I'll just introduce it until I get more, but I would like to coin the phrase "lagoon platoon," and I have a, I have a process of cleaning a lagoon and a lot of suggestions to address that, and I'll turn it in next year, and happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tovey. Okay, we're moving to public hearings. Item H1, Mr. Helmer?
Yes, this item is to expand the Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer District to allow St. Luke's Church on Mecca Road to be included within the district. They've had water quality problems for some time and would like to be able to have access to Barefoot Bay water, so the approval of the ordinance would allow that to happen.
I make a motion to approve?
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 2, H2? Give Ted a second to sit there, Aaron.
Good morning, commissioners. Item H2 is a request for the board to consider the First Amendment to a traffic and currency and impact fee credit developers agreement between Brevard County Benchmark, Melbourne, 35 Associates, limited partnership in the city of West Melbourne. The, what this agreement does, or this amendment, it basically allows a developer to modify their development program. It keeps their reimbursement for the impact fees the same. It does allow them to exchange hotel, increase the number of hotel rooms, and then they decrease their amount of commercial development. If you have any questions, we're certainly happy to answer them.
Any questions from commission? I don't see any lights. I don't have any questions. I think everybody's pretty up to date on this item, so I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item H3, this is another request for the Board of County Commissioners to consider the approval of the Second Amendment for a developers agreement with Melbourne 95, New Haven LLC, and the city of West Melbourne and Brevard County. This request allows the developer to extend out the original agreement for five years, and it does allow them to regain some of the impact fees that they've expended, but it keeps the amount at the same.
Any discussion? I remember this item well, it's in my district, and I'm glad that we are putting this to rest and able to solve this problem for these guys. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H4?
Item H4 is a proposal by Anthony Lopes and Eugene Lamondo, represented by Scott Knox, requesting a change of zoning classification from BU1 and TR3 to all BU1. The property is 1.96 acres in size on the west side of Highway 1, and the item 4 is a request to change, for a small-scale comp plan amendment, to change the future land use designation from RES2 and NC to all CC on a property 1.22 acres in size at the same
I have some cards, and these two items are similar, but you can go ahead. Mr. Knox?
Good morning. My name's Scott Knox. I'm the attorney representing the applicants, 1900 West New Haven in Melbourne. This is the third time we've come before the board, and the last time you had us before the board, you had a revised BDP that was submitted to you. As you remember, the property is 1.22 acres, which we're seeking a rezoning to BU1 and a redesignation of land use to CC. And the purpose of the BDP was to provide a series of conditions and agreements by the developer for the construction of a hotel. We have gone to staff, staff has worked out amendments to the BDP, which we've inserted into the agreement. We've also received some requests by the Summit Cove Condominium Association, Homers Association, and we've attempted to incorporate as many of those into the BDP as were feasible. Specifically, I don't know if you have that list in front of you, but they were interested in making sure that the buffer provision in the BDP applied to the developer's property, which we have addressed by inserting some language that indicates that landscaping will occur on the developer's property in terms of the rubber buffer we have to put up.
Mr. Knox, can I ask one question really quickly? Did everyone receive the latest binding development plan? I don't know if your staff had a moment to print that out. We received it yesterday afternoon. If not, I have copies for you so that you can have the most recent version.
I don't have it.
Okay, I'll just pass them out so that we're sure we're on the same page.
Okay, the revision that I'm referring to is on page 2 in paragraph G, and what we did was add the words in the middle, but toward the end of that sentence now reads the developers, the developer owner agrees to provide landscaping now reads, "The developer owner agrees to provide landscaping on his property," to make it clear that the landscaping was going to be on the county property, sorry, not the county property, the developer's property, instead of the Homers Association property, which is what they were concerned about. So we fixed that problem. The next issue they had was a setback of the wall. The Homers Association wanted to see the wall setback 15 feet on the developer's property. But if you recall the concept plan that you had in front of you the last time, which you probably as part of your materials, there's very little parking on the south side of the proposed hotel. And the 15-foot setback would encroach into the area where the people would have to drive to get to that part, to the little parking that is there and would probably cause us to lose some parking. So we would prefer not to do that. And I think that the buffer wall, the wall will meet buffer to the Homers Association property, but it also will potentially be a landscape buffer. And if there is a landscape buffer on that side of the property, it would be 15 feet deep. So we would effectively meet that requirement at the point where we had to put a landscape buffer in. As far as, the next item they were concerned about was entry gate provision, which we have enhanced to include the request that the Homers Association had on that particular item. They wanted to make sure that the gate system was going to be provided with 84 cards or some sort of way to access the gate, which we agreed to put in. And we added language that basically says, "The gate system shall include any entry cards and controls for 84 units," as they requested. They were also concerned that if the engineering that was done on the gate system turned out not to allow that kind of system in that, in the area that where it has to be put, which is on the Homers Association access road, that the condition would no longer be valid and be terminated. So we added that language as well. It now reads, "In the event engineering finds, the Summit Cove does not have the space for the gate system, the developer owner agrees, agreement to install a gate system shall terminate and this condition shall be void." So we've tried to address all those conditions. The next concern they have was turn lanes on US-1. They wanted those extended all the way to the association entryway. And we're not sure if that's going to be permissible in the long run because DOT is going to have something to say about where that goes and how far it can go. So we agreed, and we have agreed in this agreement, to conform to whatever the county requires or whatever DOT requires in terms of those turn lanes. And finally, they asked that certain uses be excluded from the potential BU1 or CC use, list of uses that are permitted. And my client can't agree to that because simply, for the simple reason that they already have BU1 on the front of the property and they don't really want to give up the property rights they have established already in the event that for some reason this hotel idea doesn't materialize. So that said, I think that's where we are with the BDP. I think we've tried to conform to as much as we can with the homeowners' requests. We've addressed all the staff requests that were made between the last meeting and this meeting, which are all now part of this BDP agreement. And we would ask for your approval of both the land use change and the zoning.
Does Commission have any questions, Mr. Knox? You have any questions?
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Erin, for this new proposal in the BDP, do you guys have any hesitation still? Or is this all right? Because I know we had some hesitations about the gate not being on the hotel property. Does this solve all those issues?
I think even can confirm this as well, but I think that we're comfortable with the language about how they will negotiate the potential to build a gate in the future. I think they've included language that if the county were not to come to an agreement on how, that it could be constructed in the space that's available, that there's a mechanism for both Summit Cove or the applicant to get out of that contribution if it couldn't be constructed, so.
That was an accurate summary. Thank you. I don't see any more lights. I have some cards here, but it's for item five. This is the, this is the comp amendment. The next item is the zoning classification change, so.
Okay. I thought I.
I mean, you can speak on four and five. I'll just edit.
Okay.
What is your name?
Daryl Leonard.
Okay. Gotcha, right here. Come on up.
Thank you. I would give anything to be tall enough to reach that mic. Daryl Leonard, 8520, US Highway 1, Mecca. And I'm speaking on behalf of Summit Cove Condominium Association. For the record, we are not a HOA, we are a condominium association. We had a meeting of those owners that could make it last Thursday and had a good discussion. And this general consensus is that we do want to work with the owners and the attorney and that there are just certain issues for a low-impact residential community on the south side of this, of their property, the west side of their property, and actually the north side of the property, that we wanted to kind of protect that low-impact. And the concerns that Mr. Knox brought up, addressing our concerns, he has met most of those. One of the things that I'd like to clarify is that he said that he could not set the wall back or the fence back 15 feet as it would impact the parking, but they would somehow get the landscaping for the required buffer in there. And I'm not sure how that would happen. If there's not the 15-feet space for a wall and a buffer, it's going to take over the parking. Does the parking, is the parking considered a buffer? That's my one concern, issue. The gate system, what we were clarifying is that we wanted to make sure they would do the engineering, which I'm assuming that with Erin's comments, that that is the case with this. And then the last one is the BU1 for the back portion of the property. We have asked that, and you have my, the document I sent to you, indicating that fast, drive-through restaurants and gas stations and convenience stores and packaged liquor stores, we would like to see excluded. The back portion that they're asking to be concerned, to be zone BU1 is really the portion of property that is contiguous to our buildings and to our common area. It is right on top of us. Our front two rows of condominiums are literally only 50 feet from their property line. And to have a drive-through restaurant back in there, the traffic would be pretty high for the type of development that we have and that the development to the north is. And that's what we're, we'd like to see exempt from in the BU1.
Good time, that, good.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure. Commissioner Lober?
Just a question for Erin. As far as our ability, if the Board were to want to exclude particular business types, do we have any ability, as far as you're aware, to do that? So for instance, if we didn't want there to be a liquor store in a portion of the property, could we approve this contention upon there not being a permission to put up a liquor store or any of the other items that were mentioned? Do we have that ability?
That would be a voluntary commitment that the applicant would have to agree to that would go in the binding development plan. If you were to consider limiting those uses, that would be new on the western portion of the property that doesn't currently have the BU1 zoning.
Right.
You can condition your approval today with the applicant's agreement, of course, on limiting those uses in just that area or on the entire piece, but that is solely up to the applicant whether or not they would consider that.
Okay. And then, I guess, is it Daryl?
Yes.
In terms of the biggest concern, because I want to be fair to them too, is the liquor store the biggest concern or is there some other particular use?
I believe the drive-through restaurant's the biggest concern.
The drive-through?
Mm-hmm. And a gas station, convenience store.
Is that something that you all would entertain as far as restricting that on that portion of the property for those couple items? I'm not going to harp at you all and ask you to go through one by one, but for those couple uses?
I don't know. We know what we want. We want a hotel. We also know that we have our rights to do what is under the BU1. We don't have any intention of a liquor store. We don't have any intention of this area, but we still want to maintain our rights. In the last 40 years, we've been very good neighbors. We haven't, we're still going to be good neighbors. You see the development on US-1. We have the sewers coming in. It's coming. The area near the bridge is coming. So just to hold on, I think we've gone above and beyond, not beyond, but above and, and really did a long stretch and put our investment into satisfying our neighbors.
It sounds like you certainly have.
I mean, we, we had unanimous from planning and zoning. Staff was very, very happy with our agreement. We're ready, willing, and able to go on our original plan of what we have now. And that, and we're doing it ourselves. So that's where we want to focus. So I think we've given everything that they wanted and I want to be good neighbors and we're going to go forward with this development and we're going, you're going to be very proud of us in South, in South Beavard. You really will be. Thank you.
Just a real quick question. Mr. Knox, do you mind if I ask him directly or do you want me to bounce it through you? I promise I'm not going to get him in trouble.
Okay.
All right. In terms of their concerns with the engineering for the gate, is that something that you all understand that you'll be responsible for?
That's part of it. That's, that's a given because you have to do it in order, it's presented to the city for, to the county for permitting and everything, absolutely.
Okay. And then as far as the one other concern with the spacing between the wall and the landscape buffer, what's your basic understanding?
If we move the wall in 15 feet, we're literally giving up our land rights. So we're giving up 15 feet and then who maintains that side? Do they maintain? So we're going to leave the wall. We may even modify the wall if they want it modified. We may even put more, they didn't want vegetation on their side, but if they wanted in the future, we'll put vegetation on their side. That's, but we still want to keep it on where they originally wanted it three meetings ago. And I don't want to move the goalpost. I want to just stay focused.
Understood. It sounds like you've really tried to accommodate, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? I mean, is that appropriate?
It's up to the Board.
Okay, come on up.
I'm kind of curious.
I just don't want to mess up the procedure.
No, real quick, real quick. Two items. We've never agreed to where the wall would be with them. Secondly, they've talked about they're going to sell the property, so no longer will they be our neighbors. It will be the new owners of the property.
Is it your understanding that the sale would happen after the hotel is built?
I'm, that I don't know, but I had the feeling that it was going to be sold to a hotel company that would then come in and build it.
Thanks.
And I would just say, they're bound by the BDP. I mean, no matter what, no matter who develops that property, they're bound by that.
I understand that, but good neighbors.
Yes. And I think, I think they've demonstrated that clearly. I mean, like I said, and this is going to sound very cold and I certainly don't mean it that way, but, you know, and obviously they're weighing on how we will support or not support this item, but they could really give you nothing. I mean, essentially, they could come in and say, "We want to do this, you know, we'll throw up some bushes." And if they had a commission that was willing to just rubber stamp it, then the HOA or the condominium association might not get anything. So it's not that I, I'm, I understand your concerns and I can honestly say I don't know that I would want this next to my association, but I also appreciate how they've gone out of their way to try to at least accommodate as much as possible and lessen the impact. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, Madam Chair, may I ask Mr. Knox a question?
Sure.
Mr. Knox, would it maybe be considered by the developer and yourself that, just on the portion we're changing, that you would consider in your BDP that on that area, because we're, you know, we're fixing the zoning, that there wouldn't be on that portion a gas station or a liquor store, just on the portion we're changing? That leaves your, that doesn't take away your rights right now with what you have?
Just to look at it in its perspective, you wouldn't put a liquor store 300 feet back.
I totally agree, so I think this would help.
You wouldn't put a gas station 300 feet back.
Right.
You wouldn't put a gas station, not on a corner. If I was a gas station people, I wouldn't want to put it right on a corner somewhere. So we're putting, I don't, I.
I think that's why it would make sense to do it, because you wouldn't put it back there anyway, so.
Well, a liquor store, fine. A liquor store is fine. Retail liquor store, to take it off on the back, I have no problem.
Just on the part we're changing. We're not taking away your BU rights then.
I, but it doesn't affect in case there's a, because we have a conditional use permit for alcohol and beverage, alcohol has no bearing on with restaurant and so on and so forth, in case we want to go in the back, in case they want to, okay.
I totally agree. Probably, probably liquor store would make a lot of sense, but I think they're looking at traffic conditions. So I think on that new part.
And also, and also people that come into liquor stores. I get it.
Yeah, so maybe just on that back part, we could just make it so that we don't put in a gas station or a drive-through. I think everybody would be happy.
Well, not the drive-through. I don't know about the drive-through, but the liquor store and the gas station, I have no problem on the back.
I don't think you'd do a drive-through on the back either, would be my guess either.
Well, I think some, find, some drive-throughs are on the back. So that's one of the issues.
You would have a hotel with a drive-through?
The only thing you're going to see in the back would be the road coming around the building.
And we would have an eight-foot wall.
Well, sure, that makes sense, but I don't know why a hotel would have a drive-through anyway, so.
No, we're not talking about the hotel, just the drive-through restaurant, if that ever.
It's not going to happen. We're building a hotel. So, and we're going forward. The train is going, we're on the tracks. So if you wish to have a liquor store.
I agree with that, but if we change zoning, if we have to put something in the BDP to make sure it doesn't end up with something we're not intending, so.
Gas station and liquor store, not a problem.
So you wouldn't mind putting that in your BDP?
We can add that to the BDP.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lober?
I just want to check with Ms. Bentley. Is that, are we on good footing with respect to doing that?
Yes, because I agreed to it.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I've got to say, you all have done everything that I think is reasonable perhaps and then some, so I, you know, I wanted to support it the last time. I think it's good that you all have worked with them and, you know, I have a good feeling about it, so.
Any further discussion? Any further questions? So we're approving item number four now. Okay.
I read both into the records, so you'll just have to make two separate motions and number five, conditions with the BDP.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lober?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for, or unanimously, or is it? Item number five, and I have two cards for item number five.
You're, that's us.
Yeah. Did you want to add anything?
Nope, that's it. We'll just need the public comment.
Does Commission have any further questions or anything? This is the one where we talk about the BDP and the modifications. Okay, can I get a motion?
Is there anybody in the public?
Oh, what's that?
Did anybody else in the public want to speak to five?
Oh, well, did you want to speak to five too? Yeah, okay. She came up for four.
I make a motion to approve with the change that they agreed to in the BDP.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas and we'll invite you all to the Grand Ole.
Very good. We'll come.
Enjoy, best of luck.
Item J1.
Yes, Commissioner J1, this is a request for the Board to consider the special magistrate's recommendation to reduce an accrued fine from $15,225 down to $4,824 and release the lien upon payment in full for code enforcement case 16 CE00058 at 661 Ultra Drive, Cocoa, Florida. This violation was for failure to maintain and residential overgrowth. The violation ran for 609 days to accrue the fine. The applicant or the special magistrate made the recommendation based on the applicant's testimony. Our total remaining cost for this case is $1,779. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Is that current? I have a card as well. Do you want to hear?
There's a card I'll go after if you don't mind.
Mr. Baylock?
Grant Baylock, 5403 Holden Road, Cocoa, Florida. Just here to try to get that fine reduced for Allegro Properties. The property was in foreclosure for two years, and Allegro Properties has bought that property since then, and all those fines have accumulated once it was in foreclosure and abandoned. And we're just seeking a reduction on those since he's bought it and fixed it up and fully repaired and on the market now.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb.
Just a question, because I, I appreciate the fact that you all didn't cause the issue that, that we're here over, or the underlying issue, I should say. But in terms of the pricing that you all paid for that property, did you all buy that at market value or substantially below?
We bought it at auction.
So, I presume then, in all likelihood, it was purchased substantially below market?
I would assume.
And let me ask, in terms of the, the issues that you have for the liens, were those made aware to you or were you aware of those prior to purchasing it at auction?
You know, I'm not sure, because I wasn't the procuring officer for that, so it would.
Is there any reason that you're aware of that you wouldn't have been aware of them, though?
No.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, sir. And I'm, thank you for taking our recommendation and going before the magistrate. The, the, the price that you paid was $17,500, and even as it was in foreclosure and became in bad condition, the appraisal was 43. And you picked it up in June, which it's still getting some, some adjustments after that, and you, you, you fixed it. You brought remedy to it. So, what I would agree to go with the magistrate's offer of bringing it down from $15,000 to $4,000, because you did get quite a bargain purchase option.
Absolutely.
So, I, I would agree with the magistrate's recommendation there and put it down to $4,824.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item J2. Mr. Bate.
Commissioners, this item is for the board to discuss and consider a number of items that can be presented to the legislative delegation on January 15th. We needed to get this to the board now, since we have a deadline of January 7th, to get the information to the, the chair of the legislative delegation. We can do that either in writing, and, and we will do it in writing, but in addition to that, after looking through these items and the board determining whether or not these are the appropriate ones that you'd like prioritized and, and brought to the delegation, you can also have discussion as to whether or not someone on the board wants to make a presentation to the delegation. We need to notify them on January 7th that that would occur, if, if you decide to do that.
Commissioner Loeb.
I just want to thank staff for including in their proposal this agritourism portion that's in the middle of the second page. I think that would have helped us to avoid the issues that we had at one of the prior meetings with respect to one of the properties in my district, so I certainly support that. And I just want other folks to know that's a priority of mine.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I like your priority list that you have. The NASA Causeway's on there, the John Heritage Parkway, so, and of course, the Indian River Lagoon's always at the top of our priority list, so I'm, I'm very pleased with your list.
And if, no, there's no more lights. I, I spoke with Mr. Bate about this. I would like, I mean, I know that we don't want these lists to get too long and convoluted, because we could probably write a book on the amount of things that we need help or support with from our legislature. But I would like to add public transportation as far, as a third item on our infrastructure, because it seems like, you know, we never have enough funding in that department, and where, where we can find funding, we really rely on that for those matches and that sort of thing. So, I'd like, if the commission agrees, to add continued funding and support, something along those lines for public transportation.
Good call. That's okay?
Yep.
All right. Can we get a motion with the addition of that item?
Move with the addendum.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioners, would you like us to just do a written submittal to the delegation or if someone want to make a presentation?
I'm okay with that unless somebody would like to. Would you like to present in front of the delegation?
No, I think, I think the written presentation would work better, because these things can drag on so long that the poor people sitting up here get their eyes glass over, so.
And they do. And I, I would agree with that, because there are so many.
And in written, and they're going to get it in written form anyway, so this way they can study it, and it will speed things along for them. I just think it works better for everybody. So, I would make a motion that we present our list of ideas to the legislative board in writing.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
I think so. No, we don't? Okay.
Yeah, well, I'll take that as board direction.
Okay.
And we'll have Mr. Walker. They've asked for augmentation of the information, and Mr. Walker will put that together for us, and we'll submit it, and then we'll provide copies to the board members.
And I think, I think it's also too, because we have, all of us up here have some sort of relationship with probably just about every member of the delegation, so we know we can pick up a phone and deal with them directly, and when we have something we, we want to bring forward, we often get the appointment and, and have the opportunity to speak with them. So, I, I agree. I think those meetings can drag on far too long.
Thank you.
And they've got a lot going on, so. All right. Thanks. All right. Under miscellaneous, we have item number three. I'm going to let Eden speak on this just a little bit.
All right. This item is a corrected binding development plan. You have not seen this type of issue before. The problem was that there was an error in the prior recording. The legal description was wrong. So, we have been through a process to attempt to correct the binding development plan. We had a submittal by the applicant at 6:30 PM last night. We have reviewed it. The concept and the corrected binding development plan, you have a handout with red writing on it. That's the document. It appears to be acceptable, subject to the jointer of the mortgage holder and proper execution by the owners. So, if the board wanted to approve it, subject to the CAO and CMO approval, we would be, that would be acceptable to staff. And Mr. Cawkins is here to address it as well, if you have any further questions.
Commissioner Loeb.
Just a, a quick disclosure and an abundance of caution. I know Mr. Thouetzer and I played some phone and email tag. We didn't actually have any discussions with respect to this, but since there were exchanges in that form, I just want to put that out there.
Okay. What's the will of the commission?
I move to approve the change in the binding development plan submitted by Eden Bentley.
I'll second it, even though that makes his life a little too easy. I think he's ready for war up here, and I wanted to see it, but I'll, I'll go and second it.
Ms. Bentley, do we have to add to that that this would be subject to the jointer of the mortgage holders and proper execution?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, that I would.
I would put that into my motion.
Do you want to include that in there also?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and modify the second accordingly.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck. And I have no public comment cards, so moving on to board reports. It's going to be a swift meeting. Mr. Bate?
Commissioner, I have one item I'd like to ask the board's consideration to set the date for the May workshop on advisory board's term limits to Thursday, May 16th at 1:00 PM.
I make a motion to approve the workshop.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve a workshop for May 16th at 1:00.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is that it? Ms. Bentley?
I'm sorry. No report.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to tell all of you Merry Christmas, and all my fellow commissioners, and Ms. Bentley, and Mr. Bate, and all the staff, Merry Christmas to you, and I, I hope and pray you guys have a wonderful Christmas and that your waistlines don't get a whole lot bigger.
Commissioner Loeb.
Just a couple things, mostly a heads up for what's coming down the pipeline in the future. There will be a proposed ordinance that I'm putting on for one of the January meetings, in all likelihood, the, the first of the two, with a puppy mill ordinance akin, or at least based on what Seminole County passed earlier this year. I also want to update folks as to the status of the CRA meeting with Diamond Square. We're still trying to work out a specific date that works for everyone. We've had a little bit of trouble based on how many individuals we have to coordinate with, so realistically, I think it's going to happen in February, not January. And lastly, I don't have a, a whole lot to, to say about it now, but please expect in the pipeline to hear in January, or at latest, February, an update with respect to the spectrum and charter issue. Mr. McKnight and I were, were working on that recently, and I, I think we will have either some good news or some bad news in that regard in the near future.
May I ask Mr. Loeb a question, ma'am?
Please.
Sure.
On the ordinance you're going to bring, would you mind sending us out an early copy so I can get started reading it? I won't respond, so I won't break sunshine law, but.
Yeah, that's my only question for, for Ms. Bentley.
Normally, what we would do is we'd come to the board with a request for legislative intent, and then if you liked that proposal, you would give us authorization to advertise and go forward with the ordinance. I would suspect that we would have a draft ordinance fairly soon. The only problem is the holidays. We were hoping to get to legislative intent and have at least a pretty good draft by January 8th. It may slip because of the holidays and coordinating with the sheriff.
Okay.
So, you'll see legislative intent first.
A puppy mill ordinance, and it's going to mimic which one, and I can get started for you.
The Seminole County one, and that was from, I think, March or so of this year. So, if you pull up their agenda, I can tell you that's what it's based on.
Okay. So, I can a little educate it, not frustrate you.
Sure. Yeah, and it's, obviously, there are going to have to be some items that are wordsmithed to apply in Brevard as opposed to what they have set up in Seminole. But I will tell you as well, I've spoken with Sheriff Ivy and also with, I believe it's Joe Hellebrand, who's the Director of Animal Services for BCSO. And at least conceptually, they're on board. Obviously, I'd like to, to show them the, the actual writing that's going to be put in the agenda, but as a, as a, I guess, a broad thought, they are in, in favor of it. So, I, I would anticipate either Sheriff Ivy or alternatively, Mr. Hellebrand will come and speak in favor of it. So, it's, it's going to be something where I'll, I'll certainly ensure that BCSO is on board before I move forward with respect to any particular proposal.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Is that it? Commissioner Smith?
Nothing of business significance, but I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. I hope our staff has a wonderful few days off, and I want to commend Mr. Golden and Mr. Leisenfeld for bringing more joy and cheer to the room today with their outfits. Something to look forward to for each and every holiday, so you guys set the bar very high. Thank you.
We won't be passing it.
And again, I, I would just echo what my fellow commissioner said. Thank you to staff. I mean, it's been a heck of a year. I appreciate you putting up with our crazy requests and our, and our odd meeting times and our late phone calls. We really appreciate everything that you do, and we hope you have a lovely holiday. And I wanted to ask Mr. Bate, what day, I mean, I know that there has been some discussion on New Year's Eve on whether or not it was something that we could do as far as a day off for our employees, what that would mean? I mean, I didn't mean to spring this on you. I should have discussed this with you before the meeting. I apologize.
You know, that is something that's totally in the board's discretion, of course. Passports have on occasion, when you've had that day off, and Monday was a, a workday, they've awarded an extra holiday.